Now, we can open the meeting for Tuesday, November sixteenth, now that we're recording. We don't have anyone else asking to get in. Entertain a motion to accept the agenda as may be approved.
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda to be approved. I'd like to add on to close out the COVID relief fund balance of $10,869. You know, get into it when we get into, Sarah has worked on this with Amy Laramie up at the resort. So, if we could just add that onto the agenda.
Do you want to add that between seven and eight, so it's right next to Sarah's item?
Yeah, that would be great, Sarah.
So, it'll be number eight.
Thank you.
Okay. So, all in favor of the amending the agenda, please say aye. Aye. We can do the minutes that we were at the meeting.
He just, I just think he just pulled in.
Yep. Well, you know what we can do? Let's do November second. It was the special select board meeting that dealt specifically with AJGA.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the minutes of November second.
Yeah, and.
For the AJGA.
It was all in executive session with no action taken, so I don't see any changes to that needed.
Neither.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the minutes of November second for the AJGA meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
And we can do the same thing for the November second meeting that was executive session for legal advice on short-term rental.
Make a motion to accept the second meeting of November second.
And again, it was a discussion meeting to get advice from our attorney, and there was no action taken when we came out, so I have nothing to change in the minutes.
Same here.
Okay. All in favor of the accepting the minutes of November second for the legal advice, short-term rental meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will, Chris is coming in the door, so we will take a minute, so that he can be here for the other two.
Well, you have the regular November second one as well. That's the regular meeting.
But we'll, he's coming in the door, we'll let him sit down. Okay. So, what we're doing, Chris, is we did the two special meetings that had to do with, well, it was the legal advice and AJGA, which were both in executive session.
Yep.
So, there was no changes needed to be done to those anywhere.
Okay.
So, where we are is.
Want to talk about the agenda change?
Oh, there is an item in between seven and eight that Jim had asked we add to the agenda.
Yeah, I got that.
And it has to do with the COVID relief fund. So, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of, this is our regular November second meeting as may be amended.
I'm moved.
So, we're good there, and I, I didn't have anything, but I'm curious, Steve Feiner had asked about furniture for the new firehouse. Have you had any word from him yet?
Eight to twelve weeks.
Eight to twelve weeks. Okay. So, the minutes are correct. This was just a follow-up question about, that we didn't know, they hadn't given us a date. I did not have anything in here. The, yeah. Okay. Did you have anything, Chris?
Nope. I reviewed them earlier.
Okay. Yeah, I looked at them online also.
Yep.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of November second as maybe, as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. One of you has to do the November eighth meeting, because I was not at that meeting.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of November eighth, which was once again an executive session for TIF.
Yep.
Stands as written.
Yep. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do we have select board member concerns?
Not at this time.
No.
Okay. For all of you that are zoomed in, and Patrick, who's here in person, citizen input, is there anything you would like to bring up that's not already on the agenda? If you do, please unmute yourself or raise your hand, whichever way. You good there?
I'm good.
Okay. Thanks, Kurt. In that case, is Lucretia on? We will go to, Lucretia's actually away.
Lucretia's away. There's only one.
This is Board of Liquor Control?
This is Board of Liquor Control for an outside consumption permit for Killington restaurants at the Killington Base Lodge. This is for the, the World Cup.
Yep.
They have the map here. It's the same as last year, they're running it the same way, or the last time they had it. And so, it's just a renewal, and.
Make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with the Killington World Cup outside consumption permit.
Yeah. And this, this has to do with the location and the permit. It doesn't have to do with how they operate regards to COVID. That's really not our, for us to say. So, all in favor of having the town clerk move forward with that permit, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have a letter of support for the recreational grants. I have one of them here.
Thank you. So, we came to one of the other select board meetings just to say that we are partnering with Rutland Regional Planning Commission for a V transscoping grant, which covers the loop from Route four, Route 100, over to Thundering Brook Road and also River Road. Looking at, as we grow our mountain bike trails, there are additional safety concerns, traffic, things like that, and so, we're seeking a scoping grant that would look at everything around those needs as we continue to grow. So, this is a letter of support that we, is required for the application, which is written, and we're currently in the draft phase for, you know, final revisions. The town, we would use $9,000 from the rec capital budget that we use for grant matching, and we're asking for $45,000 from federal funds.
I make a motion to instruct the town manager to sign a letter of support to Scott Robinson for this grant.
Okay. I know you said this at the beginning, Sarah, could you repeat the area that this, I know you said four and a hundred, Thundering Brook, River Road?
Yep. So, the idea, that's right, and then coming from four. So, the idea is that bikers are already traversing those areas and trying to link our recreation assets between Gifford Woods, Sherburne Trails East, as we're calling it, since we have people crossing Route 100 all the time, it really dangerous areas. And then, how they get over to our rec facilities and thinking about, as, you know, people are already trying to do this, so what's the best way, looking towards the future? And as we grow our bike trails and the Velma comes in, and we have more visitors, what, you know, how are we going to move people around?
Okay. That was my only question. I'm very much in favor of this, I just wanted to make sure of where we were talking about.
And Sarah, is this, is this the grant remind me of where it was 130 something people, and they knocked it down to 25? Or is this a different one?
This is different. So, that's BORIC, that is also going in this month, and we do not need a specific letter of support from the municipality in the same way, although we, as you said, we have talked about it before. That is specifically for building. This is just a scoping grant, so we would get someone to come and look at all options, right? What would it take to build a bridge? You know, build, like, everything from really basic, simple options like putting in crosswalks, to looking at future problems we may have, and then from there, actually creating a plan if we, if we want to attack these things, here's how you would do it.
Okay. I'm all for it, and just hopefully, we're looking also on River Road for additional parking because of the Thundering Brook falls.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
Hundred percent.
Okay. All in favor of Jim's motion to request the town manager to sign this letter directed to Mr. Robertson, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And on number eight, Jim, do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure. I'm just going to say that, I believe it's almost two years now ago that we started, or Pamela, I forget her last name now.
Martin.
Pamela.
Pam Martin.
Pamela Martin. Pamela Martin started a GoFundMe fund, and then along the way, the resort kicked in $60,000 for a COVID relief fund that was specifically aimed at food and helping others that are in need in different ways. And we have, at the current time, $10,869 that are in the fund account. Sarah spoke with Amy Laramie, I believe, the other day. The rec department is requesting $3,145 for rec scholarships for the summer. KES Sunshine Fund is requesting $2,000 for the, this winter coming up, and that would leave $2,827 to each of the churches for food insecurity. And Sarah, do you just want to mention the names of the two churches again?
Sure. The Church, Mission Farm. Yeah. Or also known as Church of Our Savior, and then the Little White Church, I do not remember what its official name is. Church of Our.
The Snows.
Lady of the.
Lady of the Snows, yeah.
Well, that's the Catholic side of it, that's not the food, the food part of it.
It's a, it's a shared building, so.
Okay.
Lady of the Snows is the Catholic side of it?
Oh, okay. So, we're looking for, yeah, the one.
But I think Little White Church tells us where it is.
Yes. True. But they focus on food insecurity with their food bank, so we want to support that.
Okay. And has anyone been in touch with Pam Martin in regards to the disbursement here, since she's the one that set it up to begin with?
This has been taken away from her once. Pamela Martin had raised the funds in the beginning, which was probably around $20,000, Sarah.
Right.
Yes.
Since then, it's, she handed the money over to the town of Killington, and we've been working with the ski resort since they had put $60,000 in.
Okay.
As you can see now, the resort's not here either, it's just a matter of making sure that we're allocating it the right way.
So, this would basically absolve the fund?
Yes.
Yes, which Chuck and Lucretia would say we should be doing anyway.
Yep. Great.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
So, we actually don't have a motion on the floor to do this.
I'll make a motion to accept the suggestions to relinquish the COVID relief fund as specified.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Sarah.
Is Chuck on? I saw his name earlier. Did you have anyone contact you about short-term fine appeals?
Well, I, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Apparently, nobody's showing up, so I guess the answer is no. There were three, there's three people that still have outstanding funds that need to be dealt with, and I informed all three of them that they should really show up to this meeting, and apparently, they decided not to.
Okay, that's their choice. All right. Do you have anything else you need to share with us at this time, or?
No, just another reminder, you know, short-term rental renewals or registrations were due a few days ago, so just a reminder for people to make sure they renew their short-term rental license if they're going to be renting some coming winter, next summer.
Okay.
Chuck, do you know about where we stand on registration so far this year?
Yes. So, the ending number last year was 591. Right now, we have, it changes every day, we're about 270 people have registered or renewed so far. We are trying to contact a lot of people, because there's some issues with how the data is stored and new grabs, and I don't believe all the owners have been notified that, you know, they have to do renewals, and since this is the first year, I think a lot of people just don't realize that. So, I'm in the process of trying to get, you know, contact everyone, make sure that they know.
Thank you.
And as I get in contact with people, they do renew, so it's just going a little slower than anticipated.
Thank you, Chuck.
Okay. Thanks, Sarah. Okay. 2023 budget?
Yeah, basically, I just wanted to, we've had presentations from all the departments, and wanted to just go over what we've covered so far. I provided a budget, the highlighted numbers on there are numbers that we've changed in the conversations from, from what was initially budgeted. So, we have, we have the breakdown of the, of the salaries, both of the treasurer and the clerk, where we didn't have, we had a budget number for one, they used to be combined, now they're separate in the budget, so we have the breakdown of those budget line items. And we, in the listing side, we have, we did get our proposal, well, the preliminary proposal for the, the vision program, and basically, the number you're looking at there, the 22,000 includes the 8,000 that's there, plus all of the modules. We haven't decided if we were going to go through with those, but for the time being, as a placeholder, I put in the entire package, because there is some redundancy. CII is one of our contracted services right now, and they provide all of our work related to the, the GIS system, and one of the numbers in the, in the vision program also covers the GIS management, so there is some duplication here, but we got to make a decision on that. I have provided the draft RFPs to the listers as well, and they have reviewed it and gotten back to me, and we are going to prepare the RFP to go out now, but this was for budgeting purposes, and this isn't related to the reappraisal, this is managing the system, updating all of our, all of our land records onto their site and being hosted offsite, so it will no longer have to be a server in town, which will save over time as well. Basically, the interesting thing this year, insurance is based on, and I'm going to assume a lot of this has to do with COVID, and you can even look at it from the benefit side, virtually no change in.
Really?
In budget rates, because there just wasn't as many items going along there. Requests from the planning commission related to salaries and wages, and it was basically for stipends for the number of, the number of meetings that are currently going on, and we pay on a per-meeting basis. We put in a new estimate that was requested there, and then the numbers that were requested by the planning and zoning department, well, the planning commission, related to the director of planning and zoning position, the assistant, legal services, and contracted services. So, all of these numbers have been in, increased, you can see the continuing education was increased, because we are going to be getting some training for, for our, our commissions. The rest of this area stays about the same. We are in the process of reviewing the police increase and staffing levels, so we will be commenting further on that later in December. Just a clarification, any of the highlighted numbers, on the fire department, they have a, they had a building maintenance line item, so it would look like a duplicate for the new building, but this actually relates just to the, the lower building here on River Road, so for, for maintenance for that, so I wanted to put that clarification in. So, and solid waste disposal, we had an increase, there was actually a typo in there, so it was 10,000 higher than it is, it's 18,400, so that correction has been made, which reduced the number. Line striping is a number that, because we do plan to, we had been requested to try and see if we could get line striping twice a year, we were, we had it planned for this year, and we weren't able to get our second one. So, it's just the nature of the beast, it's hard to get them here at one time, let alone two. We had a $23,000 decrease in the salt budget, because we were told to anticipate a $14 increase in the, the per-ton rates for salt, but we have been buying direct from the company that got the, the state contract this year, and they've always given us state contract price, whether or not we, whether they did or not, we didn't buy through the state, and so therefore, our salt budget hasn't changed at all. We were fortunate to be able to reduce that 23,000 out of there. New IT equipment, we did put in an additional $10,000 this year, because we are going to need to update our, our server, and we're going to be going to the new optical one, we think it's going to be somewhere between 7,000 and $10,000. We're on the, about five years for the one we have now, and it's really starting to fail, and we're also having issues with our tape backups and things of that nature, so it's starting to cause some issues.
Is the state still looking at changing NIMRC?
NIMRC is no longer going to be the state, the state software related to the grand list, starting next July 1st. The July 1st of next year, there will be a new company doing the grand list software, but it's still supposed to be able to be imported into our system, so we're waiting to see how that goes, and how.
What's the name of the new system?
I don't remember. Because it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily affect us, it just sends us the data, and then NIMRC has to be, we have to be able to import it into NIMRC, so that we can then do our tax billing and things of that nature.
But we will stay on NIMRC?
For the time being. What we're basically going to do is evaluate where we are and who works well with this new software, because given that we've hired a new, the new finance manager, Mark, he's, he's getting far enough into it now, he's starting to see where the limitations are, and we're trying to determine whether or not it's going to make sense, and that's something we'll be evaluating over the next few months.
Great.
And he can compare the new stuff to what we have now?
Yeah. As far as, as far as appropriations, basically, it remains the same, we just carry the same numbers over, we're getting all of our letters, we'll see if there's any, I think there's going to be one likely new one that will be requested on the ballot, but when I receive that letter, I'll let you know. On the agenda, we have the benefits budget. If you look here, it basically goes up $4,300. The only thing that's not included in this, we just got the email from the state as to what they're going to change, the VEMR's contribution for the employer, it's going to go up a half a percent, so that will add another $4,500 to this budget. So, right now, we're up about $4,300, so it'll be a total of $8,600 over $536,000, so it's not a huge increase, but there is a minor increase solely on that area.
So, Chuck, I've got a couple of questions here. I'm going to go back to the planning commission.
Yep.
They're meeting tomorrow night to really put their final budget number together, I believe.
Yes, basically, we, this is what they had given me interim, and we will be finalizing it. This, what I included was the conversation I had with, with Lisa as to what they proposed, she sent me it in, in an email form, because one of the things that they were doing was combining the two together.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure that we all understand that this is not their final, that they're, they're coming back.
Correct.
Can you go back, can you go back to the benefits and the?
Because all, all of this is still draft.
Right.
And we, because like, we won't, we won't get our final, our final benefits expense for another couple of weeks.
So, can you explain to me here that when we have line items that have salaries, okay, and all of the departments, and then underneath employee, benefits, there's vacation, holiday, and sick.
Correct.
What exactly is that?
Vacation, holiday, and sick relates only to hourly employees.
Okay. Only to hourly employees.
That's correct. Salary employees, because they are salaried, it's a fixed amount of money for the year, there's no taking out vacation time, there's no taking out holidays, because you're just getting the same payment, we've never budgeted those separately. So, basically, that's strictly the hourly people, it's why it's a little bit high, and I want to go back and look at that, we might be able to reduce that by about 10,000. We've always been a little low on that, so I'm going to be looking at trying to get that reduced as well.
Okay. And then, can you go back to the appropriations, back up, where it's at, okay, that right there?
Yep.
On the one that says Neighborhood Works, Brock, and Reddick?
Yep.
So, I believe the Reddick, that, that is now Cedar?
Cedar.
C E, that, that's Lyle Jepson's group?
Yep.
C E D D R, I believe?
Is it DDR?
I believe, or C D R, or whatever.
Well, I'll highlight that, so I can confirm it.
Yeah, so just, we, we, when we approved this, it was a certain dollar amount per person in the town of Killington.
Right.
And since now, that's based off of the 2010 number, I think it's like a dollar a person or something like that, so that group has really helped us out in, in the TIF process.
Yep.
So, I'll be making a request at the next meeting.
Okay, because they, what they, they'd send us a letter for the same amount of money.
Yeah, I think it's just an automatic letter, so.
Right, so I'm saying, if, if, if we do that, because basically, if it's by population, it should be about 1,400, and then they, they should, if they could send us a revised letter, it'd be great.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll, I'll have a conversation, and we'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I mean, he has been amazing working with us on this TIF.
Oh, no question. Okay. So, that's another number to look at. On the capital project side, basically, it's a $150,000 increase, some of it is due to things that we delayed, because we had done 398,000 in Bituminus, dropped it to 355, and we're back up to the, to the correct amount by, by inflation factor, because there is an inflation factor in the program. So, basically, a lot of these, and the gravel resurfacing is back up to its original number, so just those two items alone are about $80,000, putting them back at that location. The other ones have their, their, for lack of a better word, cola expense going with them, and we have the police department capital, I raised it to 21,750, because we are buying new cruisers, and we're going to plan to buy those cash, and the public safety building is getting closer to its correct amount of, this is the next step to get it to 75,000 for the, the capital replacement program for that building.
Okay. And then, and then on the Killington Road walkway, I think what you're going to see coming out of the planning commission tomorrow night is where they're talking about lowering the amount for the Killington Road walkway, and putting it more into a special project, whatever, but we'll wait to see what they say on that.
Right, yeah, and I think the amount of money will stay virtually same, so that, for the purposes of planning and this, you know, that'll, that'll be an allocation issue, but I think we're okay with the number.
Okay.
And bonded a debt, and this is slightly down, because we did, we are retiring quite a bit of debt. So, when you look at this budget overall, it's a $476,000 increase over last year, between salaries, COVID expenses, and, and the 150,000 for the, for the capital part of it, and our current grand list is at 7,919,548, which would mean we'd have basically a six-cent increase. So, that's if you leave everything the same, but I wanted to bring up my.
Projections?
Projections. One of the things that we were able to do last year was delay a year for when we were supposed to see our, our new increase. We were supposed to be at 5701 last year, and we were at 5382, I believe, and this year was predicted to be at 5744, and this is a prediction that goes back four years without all of the changes that have happened from the town's perspective. So, you know, in an essence, from, from the, you know, we've always talked about the sustainable plan, from the sustainable plan, we're about two and a half. From the sustainable plan, we're about two and a half cents higher than that, but it is about a six cent increase over last year. And that's just preliminary, just for conversation. But that does include all of the, the planned expenses at that point.
So Chad, can you go back to your sheet on the revenue side, the top three or whatever? The beginning of revenue?
Yeah, somewhere.
For the budget?
If I can get my system to work my hand, actually. Revenue.
Okay.
And this, basically for the planning purposes, I carried last year's tax amount over so it would give us the calculation difference.
Right. So I'm looking for the carryover number?
The 120,000, well, last year it was 75,000, this year it's zero, where to go?
I'm getting dizzy.
Sorry about that. Carry forward balance, there it is.
Carry forward balance, where, carry forward. So yeah, so basically the first line there is 120,000.
Yep.
That's saying what we budgeted in 2021, correct?
Twenty, 2020.
Twenty, but then the actual?
Oh wait, no, you're right, 21, because we're, 22 is the one we're in right now, which is the 75,000.
So but then the next line over?
Yep.
Is not showing, I mean, by law, we had to have carried it over. We voted on carrying that over.
We, we did, you carried it over for the purposes of calculation, but you don't have, we didn't put an actual in because that particular budget, I mean, my, my, what do you call it, it's not done yet. The audit's almost done. This is to tell us what the actual was. Budgeted was 120, budget here was 75.
Okay.
Okay, but these are actual, these are actual volumes.
That brings up my next question. When are they going to have our 2021 done?
Any day. We're very, we're very close.
So now, the 2000, okay. So 2021 carryover, right?
Yes.
Is supposed to be brought over to the 2023 budget.
Well, the, that's, well, that's, that's
Because the actual, the actual 2021 carryover should have been from the 2019.
The 2000.
That should be a, that should be a solid number, it should be, because that's, that's working on the budget. So if we're bringing over in 23,
Right.
we need the 21 number.
Right, and I'm waiting for the 21 number.
Okay.
So because that's, those were, these were actually, these weren't actual exact carryover numbers, this is what we decided to carry over.
I know, but so I'm just going to come back to 2021, which is the 120,000?
Well, they, okay, it's technically, because that was for the 2000, okay, it's the carryover used for the 2021 budget. It would have been the 2019 carryover.
Okay, so do we have?
And the 75 is the 20.
So, so Chad, let's slow down. 2021 budget is based off of the 2019 carryover. Do we have the 2019 audit done?
Well, it would be the 120,000 because that was the number before we put it in, we just didn't put it
No, because at that time it was a budget, I mean, so, so that's all I'm getting at is the 2019 number should be there. We should have that audit done, so we should know what we brought in in 21.
We do, and that's, we did know when we, when we carried it over and we put the 120 on the budget side. And we didn't, we don't typically carry it over on the actual side, but we can put it in there. But the 120 is the number, we, it was 121 or something like that.
I mean, it's $120,000 that I don't want to be seen missing. So if we told the voters we were going to bring 120,000 over and, and, and the 2019 audit is done, it should tell us if we were right. Because right now we're budgeting 75,000 for the 2023, based off of the 2021 budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but we don't have the 2021 audit finished yet.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd just like to see what the real number was for 2019 that we used for 2021 that, that, you know, is there.
So you basically work in a two-year?
Well, it's basically, the, this past July 1st, there's a carryover number that I will get now. We then budget that way, but that's the actual number as well as the budgeted number because it's already done. You know what I'm saying, so?
Is it every two years?
No, it's a year and a half.
So
So budget-wise, it's two years?
But the act, it should, if you're budgeting for it, it should somehow show up in the actual.
Well, the reality is, is it, because it, because it's, yes and no. And the reason is, it's budgeted for because it's actual. You follow what I'm saying? Yes, it is.
Okay, so Chad, let's jump forward. You have $75,000 for 2023 budget.
Yes.
When is your audit going to be done for 2021?
Anytime now.
So
But I'm saying is, if we just, if we say that you're carrying, if you say that it was actual, your carryover is going to be different every year. See, it, it's, it's not really, it's not a budget, it's not a budget versus an actual. Because the 120,000, we're, but statutorily, if we have a carryover on July 1st, we have to put it in the next budget year. That's what that 120,000 is.
You have to do it from two, from two budgets ago.
No.
Two full, or, or in our case, a year and a half ago.
Right, but my point is, is that 120,000 was an actual number at the time we put it in the budget.
Okay, so, so if it was budgeted and then now it's an actual, why isn't it in the actual?
Well, I, I'm saying, all I have to do is carry it 120 over, it was actually 121 and change or something, so.
Well, that's what I asked you to do in the beginning, you said you couldn't.
Well, no, I can, it's just, it's the same number because it's already actual before you budget it for it. And you don't typically show that as an actual expense.
Chad, I want to know what our receivables were for the actual, not the budget.
But it's not, my point is, is that's not a revenue when you have the carryover. This is, this is, I will double check with the audit.
Then why do you have it in the budget?
Because we're required to show it, and our auditor required it to be in there.
You're required to carry it over, not to show it.
For, for the purposes of calculating the tax rate, that's why it's on the budget side. But you don't, you don't report it as an actual, but I will confirm that with Bill.
We'll, we'll, we'll move on.
Yeah, I will, I'll confirm that with Bill.
Chad, there have been years where we don't have the budget done, we don't have the, the audit done. And then they come in and say, oh, we were off, your, your number wasn't 120,000, it was only 30,000.
Right, and that was the $75,000 year because we had $75,000 and then rate it, rate, after we went to print, it went down to 14,000.
Well, whatever. Let's not get that 75,000 mixed up with this 75,000.
No, that's fine, we'll, we'll have this conversation, we'll get it cleared up for the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Do you use the preliminary, oh, you did tax rate implication?
Yeah. Capital budget, and yeah, we did all that.
And this is not set, so we don't have to
No, this is not, this is not, actually, you're not, we're going to basically do a preliminary discussion in December a couple of times. But you won't, you can't officially approve it
Right.
until the second meeting in January. So it's, because we're still going to be getting, like, we're still going to be getting numbers for, for
To work in progress.
Benefits and things of that nature.
Hey guys, where we're at now, we're looking at a six cent increase and this is where we start saying yes or no, coming up in the next bunch of meetings.
Right.
And if, if you want to go with a six cent increase, then that's what he's giving us as a town manager, as a budget. And if we want to make some changes, this is where we have to, you know, in the next couple of months, especially the month of December, start taking a look at things.
Right, I mean, basically it's, you know, if you're saying that, well, that's too much, we got to find two cents, then I will bring you recommendations as to where we would take that from. So that type of thing, so that's, that's the goal, is to let you know where we are and so that we can then develop a target.
How much was the increase last year?
It was about four and a half or five cents. We knew, these were the years that a couple of the new debt service things were coming online and then they're going to be dropping off over the next couple of years.
Thanks.
So, okay.
And do we have Brown Golf on?
David, you here?
Golf Financials is next.
Man?
There he is.
So David sent some, we have the, the
Yeah, I sent a bunch of stuff, if you want to stick to that fourth corner, I'm fine with that as well.
Well, we, well, basically, we have our finance, we're just going to go over the financials that are basically July 1st and now, which show an actual net of $853,000 as compared to nine, 793. I mean, it's not a number that says that that's profitability, but we're about $60,000 ahead of where we were last year at the same time. So I think overall, you know, we're, we're in a good place. Obviously, the year doesn't end until July. So when you look at the gross net, the gross net's slightly up from last year at the same time. So I think we're, we're doing okay. We don't have any, I don't think there's anything major to report on either side. But the budget that, the conversation David has is more about, you know, how did the season go? Overall compared to what was budgeted, and then he has the preliminary budget for next year, we just got that today. So I don't expect anybody to have, be able to go into detail with questions at this point. But I think it's a good part for, for David to go ahead and give us an introduction to it.
Certainly, and I just apologize to John for being here. He did have a previous budget meeting at another of his courses that was scheduled a couple of weeks ago. So John and I did speak today, he has gone over the material with me as well. I think, Chad, as I said to you, there are some things moving forward between now and the end of June that aren't big deals, that I'd like to bring them out in terms of increase in salary and wages with the climate moving forward. I think there are things that we need to just discuss. There's nothing that negatively affects the bottom line. But I think it, it, just bringing it out and making it open. There are also good news items such as revenue, I expect to see an increase in revenue when we do open again in April or May, between now and the end of this budget period due to factors like increased play and increased daily rates. We haven't reached yet, we're still repping on them. They're going to be in the area of eight to 10%, that's our daily rate play. So to give you an idea, just to get that out there in the, in the, in the market is our, our current daily rate is $101 per player. I see that as being around the $110 mark per player. We've already broken that $100 barrier, now competition is in the 115s and 120s. Woodstock was charging in the 140s to 150s this year for a, for a daily play. So that's where I see us, and, and then increasing that at a similar level for the next two to three to four years, getting us into that 130 to 140 range, you know, as our, as our rack rate, so to speak. But in terms of what I see between now and the end of June, which is our current budget period, I do see revenue raising, of course, revenue is raising fractionally from eight, and, and the numbers I'm going to be talking about here are total budget period. So we go from 875 to 889. The key would be in total labor, 386 to 397. And I'm reading off the numbers that I prepared.
Chad, can we put off of these guys, because you're starting the highway to 1500? Or the bonds?
Yeah, because this page of budget is really hard to read.
You want the 21, 22, or the other one?
That, that's, that's the old one, I mean, that's the, that's the one we submitted, but I have a one that, that is revised.
And you send it to him right away, David?
They already has it.
I sent it, I sent it to you, I sent it to you this afternoon, Jim.
Yeah, I know, but you have six or seven other people online looking, so.
Well, it's, I got the, the 22, 23 budget up.
Okay. Is that the one you're looking for, David?
Uh, that is the, the budget that was submitted last year, and, and there is a revised one, so.
This is 22, 23. This is the current.
22, 20, that is, that's not, that's the one that starts July for us next year.
No, 21, 22.
Instead of us going back and forth, David, you have an email, you can just send them, so we can pull it up instead of
I have them all up, I'm just trying to find the right one.
On my, on the computer I'm using from home, I can download it.
Okay.
I'm happy, I'll, I'll send them tomorrow.
Because I mean, I have all of these budgets here.
Yep. It's just with, with the small screen setup, it's difficult to look at all of them at the same time. And then, and this is a, a discussion point other than, I mean
Yeah, just go, at le, at least if you have the original without the first one, I'll do that.
Yeah, the original is right there.
Okay, just go off of that.
No, that's not the original, that's 22, 23, sorry. There we go, 21, 22.
Thank you.
If you go to the summary page, and we can and basically go to the titles. Why can't I move this number here? Oh, I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that, okay. That net profit 88,000, and, and this is, I added some capital lease payments in there as well, which we haven't discussed yet. So that with, uh, let's see here, 36,000 of capital lease payments that, you know, may or may not come into effect starting next year, 2022, that 88,000 net profit on my revised budget drops to 58,000. Jim, are there any other numbers there you would like a reference point for?
No, I just wanted, so we weren't looking at the town budget when we're talking, your budget.
And that 88 number in, um
Yeah, you're, that, that's based off, and then you're going to come back to us later on your capital or whatever.
Correct, yes, I have, I have a cap, I have an updated capital list that I also can't, set, sent to get. There's no, there's no surprises or anything new there. There's just some items up for, you know, that require an update. There are some items we have yet to receive, there are items in transit and, and so forth. So I, I just wanted to make the board aware of where we stand on that, that's that, yep, that's it right there, so. The items in green we've received, and the, and the things that we've done on that list in green, we have received. And, and those, those, those things have been completed. That yellow there is the two green mowers, we're still to receive them, but they are in transit. I believe the town have recently completed some paperwork on that. And then there's the items there down below in red that have not received, and for various reasons. Whether they have them, whether we've completed what we need to complete, so forth and so on. So that's just the, the realism of where we stand on those items.
So David, question on those items there, just to remind us, are these the items that we said we were about in red that we're going to buy out?
No, no, these items, these items are part, part of the lease payment, I believe.
Right, so, so it's not that total dollar amount?
Correct, no.
Okay, and that's when we look at the treasurer's report later on after this. It will show that there is over $100,000 in capital funds for the golf course.
No.
Still?
Yeah, because
Thank you.
We had talked about buying outright anything under 10,000.
On, like, let's say the Procore 648, did we buy it or not? You know, I think the six thou, I think this was the one, those three top ones or whatever, were all one machine, is that, does that jog my memory right?
There was, yeah, there were items that are highlighted in green up above that we did pay cash for.
Right.
Two items that are part of the same machines. That, that Toro Spica.
Right.
Then, yeah, I, I, again, Toro Fairway, yeah, then, so there are items up there that we did certainly buy outright, that we have, that we have been using.
Right, but they were already paid for, so that one would come back.
Correct.
To the yellow and to the reds.
Yellow will be, yellow will be a lease payment.
That's a lease payment. So if I could just see what the lease payment is for the year and how many years again?
Okay.
As we keep on going forward, because that's what we had said last year. We wanted to make sure that we were keeping track of what the payments are towards the capital that we put in for capital replacement.
Correct.
Cause if one, if one just looks and says there's $100,000 in capital, and, you know, if I look at these and add it up, it's just over $100,000. But if it's just the lease payment, then we know where we start from for, for your other stuff coming in.
Right. And there's, and there's some ongoing leases that will be coming out in the spring. Like, there's still payments that are going to be being made. And a lot of these items, we had ordered last May or June, and they were just being delivered. And I actually, I think only signed the paperwork, the final leases about two weeks ago or three weeks ago, because we had to wait for them to come with their serial numbers, and we had to get the insurance certificate. So they're coming shortly.
Right. But you know where I'm going.
Yes, I do.
A hundred and $2,000 capital for the golf course, but how much of that is already allocated, um, for the next couple, you know?
Right.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
For payments.
Yeah, cause, cause Jim, when this was presented to us, didn't we decide that anything under $10,000, we were going to just pay for and not lease it?
That was, there was three or four items that we did, and we already.
Right. But I'm looking at Golf Lift is $6,000. Is it that, is it that it hasn't shown up yet?
That one hasn't shown up yet. That one may be being purchased. I gotta go back and look at the list again.
Okay.
Is it on order, David?
Yes, it is. Yeah, everything, everything on that page you're looking at, um, has been ordered through the appropriate companies. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I do, I, I do believe we, as Steve had said, we said, uh, we would purchase that. So that's not part of the lease. And then the toe behind brush for top dressing, that's where I was getting at. I don't know if that was part of one of the other. So there is, then right below that for 16,000 is a toe behind top dresser.
Yeah.
So that put us over to $10,000. Those two items is $22,000.
Correct.
So that's why, that, that's why that's a lease.
That toe behind top dresser is an attachment.
Right.
Um, for that, um.
Yeah, that's, and that was all the confusion last year. That, that's.
For the top dresser. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But the Golf Lift should not be a lease. It should be a direct purchase.
Okay. I'll make note of that.
All right.
Uh, this is, we'll just bring up the treasurer's report for golf.
Right. There's the 102,001, 102,015, $55 for restricted funds.
Correct.
So what I'm looking for, and David knows it, is how much, how much of the restricted funds is for the lease payments, not just on the items that we're still waiting on, but the items that we already gotten in.
Right. I'll give you a breakdown of what we have, how the lease was, cause they did have a proposed plan that was like the next five years that was going to.
Right. Because if we don't keep track of this, and we just keep on approving lease stuff, then at some point we could be more money than we have allocating.
Yep. No, and we're, we're well within that right now, but we just, I'll, I will get you the breakdown.
And that, that was the plan when we discussed it, to stay within that number.
Within 100.
Yeah. That we.
Yeah.
And that's why we said we're just going to buy outright anything under 10, and not add it to the lease payment and drag it out.
David.
Number stays consistent.
Yes.
Uh, one thing that we talked about at the last meeting was you were going to get us a list of how much we were going to have to spend between now and May, um, operationally to see, cause we want to make sure we have enough money. We got to pay off that $100,000 note. Um, but you were going to let us know what the operation, what the, the cash flow needs were going to be between now and.
I know I did that, I certainly did that last year. So operational.
You were earning about 35 grand a month when you closed, David. Is that right?
Yeah, I can, I can confirm that number.
Yeah, I just, we just want to verify it so we can make sure, cause basically in the next, by the time we have the next meeting, we're going to be paying that $100,000 back. I mean, obviously we, we're still pretty good in cash. You know, we're right around $600,000. Um, but we want to make, we want to make sure that that's all in the right place.
Yes.
Okay.
So other than that, I mean, you have probably had one of the best Octobers, I think, we certainly have since I've been there, not to change subject. But, but, old, old timers that have been there, Terry Manley's our starter, he's been there 20 years. Um, he said it's the best October he's seen. And that's a lot to do with the weather. And, you know, let's not kid ourselves. The golf course is in great shape, but also the weather is fantastic. So, um, we saw a good follow through and a good continuation of business. Um, other than that, the, the close down has happened pretty much without a hitch. Um, you know, the golf course is being put to bed. A little bit of snow on there now, but that's not going to be a big deal. Uh, we'll put the covers on, uh, that we've done previously. Nothing really changes there. It's, it's much of an art as it is a science to put those, you know, put them in the right place. But, uh, Robert's got a good hold on things. And, um, I think, you know, looking forward, it's just a matter of, um, there are some, there are some machinery items that, uh, we don't use anymore, that we're going to involve. And I can speak with town on, at, at, get, get on this about the logistics, but there is a, uh, it's like the eBay version of golf course equipment. Um, you can list up on that and, and sell it and, and offload it that way, so that we can generate a few funds there. It won't be a lot, but, you know, maybe 30, 40,000, um, which would definitely help us, you know, moving forward with purchasing your equipment.
Okay. Do we have any other questions?
At this time.
We're good. Jim, you have any other questions? I don't know. He's not saying anything.
No, I don't. I couldn't find my near button. No other questions.
Cause he never uses it. All right. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Bye. I see you before Thanksgiving. Well, Steve, would you have a happy Thanksgiving and.
You too.
You too, David.
Thank you.
Uh, we have town financials?
Town financials. Well, we're just getting in our second payment. Um, this is for the end of October, so it doesn't include that. Um, but we were rece, we've been receiving payments pretty steadily. Um, and as you can see by the actual.
Chad, can you put it up on the screen so everyone else can see it?
Certainly. I keep forgetting to do it today.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's not the right one.
Is that one?
So we're about a million dollars ahead on the revenue side. We did bill about 600,000 more, and we, this does include maybe more, uh, early payments than we're used to seeing before November 1st. So I'm going to reserve, uh, comment until we get to December. But we're certainly in a, getting our normal receipts. As expected, our delinquent year's tax revenue is a little lower, um, cause last year with so many sales, a lot of the delinquent were got caught up and stuff. So we just don't have as many at this time. Um, and everything else is tracking around the same. Um, the only thing it's ahead for this year compared to last year, because we didn't have any revenue at this time, is the zoning fees. So we are ahead in that area. Um, and solid waste user fees, we're a little behind right now, but we didn't get our, our, uh, transfer, bulky day, which was the big part of the revenue. Um, and local options tax, we are still, we only had the one payment. So that'll be September, October. We will be getting one here in the next few weeks, um, where we'll have our next options tax to see how we're doing. That was probably the one area that we were behind last year. We were about 60,000 down in net for the options tax for the year. But I, I'm, I'm optimistic as to where it's going to be this year. Um, expense wise, we're pretty much tracking, you know, I don't know if anybody has anything they want to see specifically, um, but we're tracking right on schedule, you know? There's nothing outrageously different than where we're supposed to be. Um, so overall, we're in a place we should be related to budget. And we have fully funded all of our capital line, our restricted line items. And we're about halfway through our bonded debt in this. And our net, and this includes, you know, obviously state, state funds for, for tax revenue, um, we're about 400,000 ahead, which probably proportionally puts us about online with the additional tax revenue that was budgeted. Um, on the treasurer's report side, um, you can see that we have about $7,700,000 in the budget, and we have 2, $2,700 in restricted funds, and 52, 5.2 million is what we'll be paying on, in December 1st. But we, obviously we'll be getting all of our, the rest of our second.
Payments.
Second payments in here. We've been getting it for the last couple of weeks. So, and all the big ones have just come in. So I think we're in an okay place. Um, I don't have anything, you know, extraordinary in either direction to report.
Yeah. Um, where do we stand in terms of the state required reappraisal? Is that something that's a year off, two years off?
We have to be completed as it stands right now, waiting for documentation in 2025. Is where it sits right now. We are getting a proposal for what it's going to cost to see where we are budget wise. We have close to, in the restricted funds, that the state money that they put aside for that, we have $309,000 available to go towards the, the townwide reappraisal. And we want to just make sure that that's got enough money in it for when we go to do it.
But that won't affect this budget that we're talking about now?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
What does that historically cost in the past?
It costs, in the last time, it was about 180, 190,000. That was 10 years ago. So we're, I think we're in the, generally the right area.
Tough to say.
You know, what it'll do when, when we get to that point is it'll affect our net cash balance when we do that, because that's $300,000. It's been just laying in the account. So that has been helpful in, in that way.
So Chad, line item 114.
Yes.
The offer grants.
Yep.
A lot of other towns or cities or whatever are discussing what they're actually going to do with those funds. We have them as a receipt. Is there anywhere in the budget that we've talked about and using?
No, when we had our conversation a couple of meetings ago, the, as I recall, the select board wanted to hold off for that. I mean, we are allowed to use it for shortfalls. Technically, the 60 something thousand dollars that we were short in options tax money could be put right back into the reserve fund. Um, we do know that there's some funds available for, uh, record restoration and, and also, um, record, like digitizing all of our records. And we are looking at, and, and it was included in the, uh, the second assistant to the clerk was the funds using $20,000. I forget the numbers now, but there was, that's some money coming from the records restoration fund and some coming from, I believe it was the ARP side of $20,000 to be able to pay for somebody to be able to do it. And to buy the machine, the, the wide, the wide, uh, scale printer scanner is about 10 grand. Um, and we are allowed to use it for those funds, so that we could then create a situation where all of our land records and the rest of our clerk side, we could get it all digitally organized. And it would all be actually tied into the, uh, the vision software if we went with that company. You know, I'm using that as a generic term at this point, not the company. But if we get into the new Kama software, we would be able to store all of that information.
Yeah. So where I'm leaning on that is I don't think we should be using those funds for our current shortfalls, but if we can be using them towards the budget that you presented to us, um.
Well, what.
112,000, $112,000 is, uh, what, about a penny and a half?
Yes, pretty close, yeah.
Of the six, six cents that you were proposing in the preliminary?
Well, the six, the 60,000 that we would, the 60,000 that we would be able to take to apply, cause we have to apply it for this fiscal year, if we, if we applied it to the, um, the loss of options tax revenue, then we could use that as carryover funds to offset the 60,000. And I have to see what else we could do with the rest.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be able to use that for carryovers until two years from now. Not this, not this, not the 23, we don't be able to use it for the 24 budget.
Right.
And this is multi, we're going to receive another payment.
We're getting the same amount of money next year.
Right. So, so what I'm getting at is, is that, you know, I don't think it's, if we know we're short on 60 grand on the, um, on the option tax, we should be moving out of the restricted funds to cover that, because the option tax goes to our general fund.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
And then that line would come down to 62, 994, whatever.
Yeah, 52.
Um, or whatever it is, not 62.
52.
But, um, so then we'll, we'll at least have a starting thing there. And then knowing that we'll be getting another 112,000, 994 in 2023, correct?
Yes. And the other, the other thing, the other thing to keep in mind here is this is allowed to be used for any infrastructure projects like water design, like the water planning loan that we're doing. Technically, all this qualifies for that.
Well, hopefully it. We just have to earmark it towards that.
That's correct.
Okay. So not, so that those things don't get caught up in our normal budget.
Correct.
Right. So once again, line line 114, do you have that exact amount put into what we just talked about, your budget line items for the 2023, showing a six cent increase?
No, it is not. Not at this time, because we, we got to look at the allowable usages and know how we're going to apply it. Cause you're not supposed to be able to use it to offset taxes.
But we can offset the expenses.
Right.
So what we should, but we had talked about this, there were some gray areas that are last.
Well, that's what we're trying, everybody's still learning, cause the rules just came out. We're trying to find where we, where, what we can do with it.
So if we offset a bunch of expenses that we're looking at occurring on the next budget with those dollars.
Right.
And then turn around, we could theoretically lower our tax rate.
That's correct. If we, cause if we basically, let's assume it was, you know, a capital water line that we had in a, in our, in our capital budget, we could then pay that 70,000 and then just not appropriate that.
Gotcha. Good.
You know, I mean, so that's where we have to find out how to make this apply.
And then that's what I'm looking at. So hopefully we get there.
Okay.
We will.
Yeah.
No choice.
Any other questions on this?
No, it looks good.
Do you have a report on West Park Road?
Uh, yeah, there's been a request, we, we, actually it was a request that came a few years ago. Um, and we looked at the possibility of putting in a, a crosswalk from the bus stop that's next to West Park Road. Um, and there are some difficulties there with sight lines and things of that nature.
Right.
Um, so we, we did, when we went through the, the Cullington Road master plan discussion, um, the master plan did show a crosswalk in that location, but because of the, because of the, um, site distance and, and some of the risks, it recommends having the RRFBs installed there. That's the same thing that's in front of the foundry, which is the, uh, the, the rapid repeating flashing beacon is what the RFB stands for. Um, so we, we have to put those there. We, in, in order to put that crosswalk in, which is something we would like to do, um, we will have to modify the, the walk on the other side. We'll have to get some power over there. Um, it's not something we can do, like, we can't just go paint it in. We're going to have to move some guard rail and things of that nature. So I think it's a program that we want to get started next spring. And it could be one of the things that the planning commission, when they talk about how they're looking at, um, reallocating the funds from the walkway would be an item. And, and the last time we did it without the RFBs was about 12 grand. So it might be a $20,000 project, um, to put that crosswalk in. And I would recommend us looking at doing that. And we could do it in the spring and this winter, get it designed and ready to go. Um, so if, if we do create a, a reserve fund line item, that's basically a subcategory of some of the highway things, and we call it spread, special projects. It is something that the planning commission could say, this is what we recommend doing. We go get it priced out and designed, and then we could build it next summer.
So that, the last I, we heard about this, you were going to paint though?
When I, when I, I was requested that we go paint that in there. And when I went back and looked at the site, it all started coming back to me what the issues were. And I went to look at the master plan, and the problem is if we did the alignment that we are now, you'd be going from the, the roadway entrance on West Park Road to a guardrail, um, and with no landing spot, which would not be a good thing. So I think we, I would recommend that we wait till the spring and, and then put it in. So we have the proper landing spot, we have the proper markings, and we have the proper, uh, lighting protection.
Chad.
Yes.
This is, the, I know in the master plan or whatever, we chose from West Park Road, but in the past, this is a crosswalk that was from the hotel. But in the past, this is a crosswalk that was from the hotel across to, there's a cutout that the town has in the mogul. That moguls were to deal with the town or the town was to deal with moguls. To take some land to have a crosswalk there. Now we're moving the crosswalk down to West Park Road. I don't know how the people from the hotel are going to get over there, but I don't know. The sidewalk will be there next year.
Well, the.
On that side of the road. But I thought we, I mean, there, there, there's no fault or whatever you fall on the Peters at Dean Hill Road. You know, part of the conversation that we had in the group was there had to be a sidewalk or something on the other side. And I thought one of the things that he said we could do is even if you just put a six by six or four by four over there, that would work.
Well, the, the issue with that is, is, because we, this is what we ran into when we looked at it at Dean Hill Road. It specifically says in the state guidelines, you cannot run a crosswalk into a driveway entrance. And in order to get off the driveway entrance, we have a fallaway of the topography. So the, and the only reason for the RRFBs in that location is strictly due to site distance issues where, which, which we don't have at Dean Hill Road. Basically what you have at Dean Hill Road where you have the walkway that runs from the corner to the old fire station with the fence in there is exactly what it would have to look like there. And it would run from the crosswalk at West Park to, to, to the hotel. So that they would have that same access. There would have to be a new crosswalk put in there. If we want to do a temporary walk across in there, you know, we can do that. It, it technically doesn't meet the guidelines and I would recommend, since, you know, we haven't had one in the past, that we wait and do it in.
But we have done that for twenty years, given away. So exactly where I'm talking about. It was there.
I, I, well, I don't remember, I don't, wasn't here at that time. I don't know. And if I, if I'm directed to put it in, I will put it in. But I'm recommending that we do it the way it's shown and the way it would be installed within the guidelines for the state.
And then we rip it up in two thousand twenty-four and put a water line in on that side?
You, the only thing, the only, the only thing you'd be ripping up is, is the paving itself and putting it back and painting it in. The other side of the road is where all the work is and that will all be used.
If it's in the right spot.
Well, will be because we're going to do it for the plan and, and match the master plan with it. That, you know, that's okay.
Patrick?
If it's out of regulation with the state and like someone gets hit in it, is the town liable for that or is it?
There's gray area there because there are municipal immunities, but it'd be, when you intentionally go out of the way, it would be my concern.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a concern of legal and legal and.
You were breaking up there, Jim. I didn't hear the end of that.
I would say it would then fly about legal and law suits.
I didn't hear it. He said, if we're talking about legal and lawsuits, then we go into executive session.
And that's fine. I, I, however you want to discuss it, that's fine. I just.
That was an attorney, though.
You know, I mean, we could.
Legal situation.
I mean, it, it just, to me, I've been looking to get the crosswalk that was there for twenty years. And I've given one reason why it couldn't. Then I brought up the fact that on West Hill Road, we have a crosswalk that leads to a guardrail and a piece of lawn, not a sidewalk. So then I was told, okay, we'll do it. Then I asked if you could just please go up there and put a white dot so I can get clarity from the line striking place to put in a crosswalk. Now, we told him a month later that.
I.
Remember you got a job, but I'm just like.
I, I just, when I went up to go put the mark in the pavement, that's where I went up to do. I saw, I remembered what my concerns were and what the concerns were and I went back and started looking up some information. And I'm bringing to you my findings on that. If you still would like me to put it in there, we can do that.
Can you send us your findings?
What?
I didn't hear him.
Send you, yes, we could send him, or send him along.
Send, send us your findings. I mean, I, we're, we're having verbal conversations.
Okay.
But meanwhile, you know, the line striking guy is coming tomorrow, but.
We can put it in there. I have no, I have no issue with that. I just, I, it concerns me. It's, it's not a big issue to pay, paint it in there. And if we paint it, we could paint it into the wa, into the driveway where, you know, that's not going to do nothing. I understand.
That's what I asked for.
I understand.
Because we're always out there.
And, and it, and it's the reason it hasn't been put in since I've been here was because of conversations that were brought up when I looked up the regulations at the state and looked up different things and why we did what we did.
I get it, but then I also ask, where was the conversation on West Hill Road? I would have to think that a sidewalk, a crosswalk leading into a guardrail is not, is not legit.
Okay, I will mark it out.
But if we start talking about a crosswalk with a block, I mean, and saying it's not legit, then let's be honest. Okay? There's a crosswalk that leads to a piece of grass with a guardrail in front of the, the repeater. So, whatever.
Well, I think that, truthfully, you know, no, it's not going to hit a hundred percent compliance, okay? But the reality is, we're better off trying to direct these people to safer areas to walk than we are to sit there and let it be a free for all, especially on that bend. And, you know, I've, I've mentioned numerous times and kind of brings into it, Chet, all those lights up there are all out. So the, the street, the walkway lights aren't working.
They're, the electrician was supposed to be there Friday and then this coming Friday and Monday to get it fixed, to get them out, back operational.
I don't know where there's a greater risk not having walkway lights and tripping and falling or putting a, a walkway in that might not be perfect, but we're trying to get people funneled in a direction.
Okay.
And I think we're better.
And that where drivers will see a crosswalk and know instead of people running from five or six different places.
They, they spill out of there for moguls and walk over there all the time. And if we could have a lit pathway to a crosswalk, it's, it's the, it's better for everybody.
Okay, it'll be marked tomorrow morning. What time's he going to be there, Jim?
People walking along that.
Tomorrow.
They spill out like walk.
They're walking along the guardrail.
They walk along the guardrail and it drives me crazy.
Moving it up towards the driveway gets it further away from the bend.
Yeah.
Then, then having it at West Park.
Something is better than nothing.
West Park is too far away. They'll never use it.
I, they would use it, Jim, if the walkway was lit.
On both sides, yeah.
But we don't have both sides, but I'm saying if the walkway was lit properly, it's more inviting than to walk down a black walkway. It's right now frozen and.
So Cory, Cory's coming in tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
Okay.
Is he going to, is he going to contact you before he's here?
Correct. He's going to give me a heads up usually about an hour before.
All right, send me a text.
Tells me he's leaving, so.
All right, send me a text.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, you're going to get, you're going, you know where the spot is on mogul's side, right? Where his town cut a path in.
Yeah.
And then, so I know we're going to do a crosswalk from that spot. I mean, I just want to go across the street at some point where, you know, it's not on the guardrail, but it's, you know, I think there's a grassy area there, but.
I just, I was, I figured I should be there when he gets there so we can talk about which, what the landing point is, that's all.
So once he texts me, I'll text you.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, under other business, we.
I just, I have a couple more under manager. I didn't have the specifics on there.
Oh, okay.
Um, just so everyone knows, when I, I've been having conversations with the Alpine Pipeline related to the route for sewer. Currently we have, you know, as we've continued to search in the old contracts, we have an allocation of approximately sixty more ERUs that we have capacity for. But we do have to spend, when we do sell any additional ERUs, we're going to have to, part, part of the purchases buying, spending, paying twenty-five hundred dollars to the Alpine Pipeline to get that connection and get those usages.
Per connection?
Per connect, per ERU.
Per ERU, okay.
And then we had, so, and basically that number of, of gallons available to us equaled about twenty-five thousand gallons a day. The concern that I had was, and, and in my conversation with Frank was, what are we going to do if we get additional development down here? You know, we have plans for some different things in, in the district and, and that. And people are starting to show interest because the ERUs are now less expensive. And how will we get additional capacity? And he said, do you want me to talk to the city of Rutland about increasing our allocation? And we have just received the letter from Alpine Pipeline stating that the city of Rutland has granted us another, basically a hundred thousand gallons or but they were purchased, where they were guaranteed for two years originally, the, the original sixty-four thousand gallons. So that's why we have to pay the twenty-five hundred. We would have had them for free if we had done it in the first two years. And they granted us another twenty-five thousand gallons of capacity, I mean, a hundred thousand gallons, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong line item. A hundred thousand gallons wasteload to, to serve as a mirror to the original contract. So we do have the possibility of getting up to another, that twenty-five thousand is, is sixty, so times four.
Forty.
Of another one-twenty, about two hundred more ERUs we can, we can sell in.
At what cost?
For, twenty-five hundred each right now.
And so there's no, there's no O and M attached.
More than twenty-five grand a year?
Twenty-five hundred per ERU if they're sold. It's not per year. We're not paying, this is not operations. This is being able to purchase capacity. They're giving, they're granting us an additional hundred thousand gallons per day of capacity that we could purchase.
At no cost unless they're sold.
Unless they're sold, that's correct.
And how long is that good for?
There's no time limit listed on here at this time.
That's a no brainer.
I'm just letting, I'm just letting you know that we were offered this.
No, it's great, especially if there's no O and M.
Yeah, there's no O and M until such time that we, we go to use them and buy them.
That's great for that entire district.
Yes. So we, we now, we have the ability, if we did have a, a large development down on the bottom end of Killington Road, to provide enough wastewater capacity.
Great.
So my quest, my question, Chet, is we lowered the price of the ERUs about a year and a half ago?
Correct.
When we lowered it down to what dollar amount?
Five thousand.
Five grand?
Five grand.
We did not take into effect that twenty-five hundred, I mean, it's going down to?
That's correct.
Rutland?
That's correct.
And prior to, prior to the five thousand dollar fee, it was what, twenty grand?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven grand? Does the, did we need the five grand per? Are we okay with just accepting five grand and sending twenty-five hundred down? Should we be revisiting the price of a new ERU?
Well, I, I believe how it works, because it's the same thing like right now, if someone buys that doesn't have an ERU and they buy one from us, there has to be a corresponding Alpine Pipeline one, which there's not. So technically, I would view it as they're paying five thousand for the talents and twenty-five hundred to Alpine Pipeline to get their full ERU.
Yeah, but we're saying we're selling it for five thousand dollars and the district is, Rutland is saying, hey, once you put it in, the town owes us twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
Not the owner.
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is the owner owes that twenty-five hundred dollars. I'm saying it's, it, the allocation is Alpine Pipeline. The five thousand is to buy a town of Killington sewer share.
Once again.
Okay.
The city of Rutland is going to charge the district, the town, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yep.
So we should be charging seventy-five hundred dollars with twenty-five hundred going to Rutland and five K going to our, um, general fund of this department.
Do we need, well, first of all, you know, the other, I would agree that, you know, five thousand, I think the Ship and Fire District is right around there. We're like fifty-five right now. But do we need to make dollars on that? We're better off trying to get some development going at five thousand versus, versus increasing the sewer cost fifty percent.
Right, and that's why I was asking that we count into our future budgets of, 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 um.
But we're not counting on this dollars right now, are we?
No, our, our, our future budgets do not incorporate additional purchases of ERUs. Our future budgets include existing costs, planned improvements and, and sustainable repair budgets. And technically, all that happens when we increase the number of ERUs is the cost per ERU for an annual basis goes down. If you were.
Okay, so we're good, we're good at staying at five thousand dollars and paying twenty-five hundred dollars to Rutland City and then keeping twenty-five hundred to the fund.
Right, basically, the only thing, the only thing that, in the short term, the only thing that we would like to do is get our, our reserve fund up closer to where it needs to be, like in the three hundred thousand dollar range. Right now, we're in the.
One eighty?
I think we're today, one sixty. But that, that's not what it's going to be for the end of the year. When we were done at the end of the year, I think we had seventy-five or eighty. So by the time we get done with expenses, we have some new revenue. I think we're going to be in that ninety or a hundred thousand dollar range, hundred and ten. So we do want to increase our reserve fund. However, if we were able to collect on all of our delinquent sewer units, we would no longer have that issue.
So I guess the other part I would throw to you, if we were to sell more ERUs.
Okay.
The twenty-five hundred, could you put that into capital reserve?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And my, well, I also would argue that in the beginning, you don't have to reduce the per ERU expense for the first couple of years so that we're then also getting some of that back for the first two or three years.
Yeah.
We already, we already, we already said, we, we left it at the one rate.
Right.
Already. To, and we specifically said to keep it at that rate until we got closer to the three hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, in the fund and that might take us three or four years to do that.
Right. So, so from my perspective, the twenty-five hundred dollars that, that we're paying out would just somewhat, and I don't know how quickly, somewhat accelerate the process of getting our reserve fund up. But it's still, you know, if you sell twenty of them, I mean, it's still not.
Twenty's a lot.
But not, and I don't, and I, we haven't sold any.
And I know.
And I don't know how many years, so, you know, I, counting on that, I don't think is the big deal. The goal right now, I think, would be to get more people on the sewers so we could have a better.
Right. And so with five thousand, I mean, the cost of engineering and connecting is fairly high.
Right.
So, you know, I don't think going seventy-five hundred is going to help us sell anymore.
No.
But, you know, to your point, if, if they could, if you could, you know, collect on pass O and M, that would surely help.
The reality is, there's one project that it, that's, would put almost all of it in place.
So Kurt sent a message to us all, but I don't think, I mean, Kurt, Rutland City's issues of them maintaining their plant is not our issue. Do you see the, the text, do you see the chat from Kurt?
I see there is a chat now. Well, just so you know, the, the issue with the city of Rutland, their overflow issue that it comes from, related to what's called the combined sewer. They combine their sanitary sewer and their stormwater for years and years and years. They've been slowly working on the CSO projects, which is the sewer separation program. The goal is, is they're increasing capacity every time they take more stormwater off. It's increasing the sewer strength because when you have a lot of stormwater in there, obviously it becomes mostly water. But you don't want to be treating basically rainwater as much as they're having to do it at this point.
But, but what I'm saying is that's not our issue. The city of Rutland has to deal with that.
Yes, but the, the reality is, is where I was going with that is the city of Rutland has a sewer capacity listing for their permit to operate. And they have granted us the additional hundred thousand, hundred thousand gallons because they do have it available.
And we're going to take it. So we're going to write a letter back and saying yes. And when we start doing our, um, calculations, if for some reason somebody wants to pick up ten or fifteen or twenty or whatever. up ten or fifteen or twenty or whatever, we're only gonna calculate twenty-five hundred of the five thousand dollars going towards the capital, cause twenty-five hundred each has to go to Rutland City.
Correct.
That's it.
Yep. Cool. And technically we pay Alpine Pipeline. They pay the city.
Yeah, so.
So, but that's where we are with that. And one final thing on the manager's report. I received a copy of another, we've done the municipal grants and aid program in the past and most of that is done for stormwater improvement projects in town. Uh, this one happens to be for equipment purchases. Um, and we basically have to choose what we wanna add to it. There are three items on this list that we were gonna consider. Um, basically the items are rolling compactors that you put on the back of the grader, which improves, um, road stability after we've done our grading, uh, leaf blowers, which are the big truck type leaf blowers, hydro seeders, which is something that we would be interested in as well, uh, compactors, tractor mounted shoulder disc to remove high shoulders, hay bale shredders, which helps with, with hay mulching, and a stone screener to clean out and replace stone in the ditch. Um, in each one of these cases, they have an estimated equipment cost. Um, they range from four thousand dollars to eight thousand dollars. Uh, they are eighty percent paid and they're twenty percent matches. And what I'm going to ask the select board is if you would want to, uh, have us participate in this, we make a motion that this is a, a letter, a notice of intent. This isn't actually making the application for the grant and we're gonna check off the things we're interested in. And if you guys would be so kind, just make a motion.
No mowers, huh?
No, this is.
So move for the town manager to move forward with, uh, looking into this.
Second.
Do we have any questions beyond this?
No.
It looks good to me.
So Chad, just a question, like all of the, all the attachments, I guess, what does it add up to?
If we did all the things, we would be, the, the three that we were interested in would cost about twenty-seven thousand dollars and we'd be paying like fifty-four hundred or something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
If we applied for all of them.
Right. I'll call the questions, Steve.
Yep. Do you have anything, Dad? You okay? All right. All in favor of the motion to have the town manager move forward?
Well, you have to, actually, that's a select board sign.
Yeah, I'll sign it.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we'll leave it with you so Jim can come in whenever he can.
Yep. I have to send it in by Friday. So when you're free of.
I, I break out tomorrow.
Okay.
Or they might keep you a little longer.
Yeah.
We'll let Jim beat it.
Okay.
Okay. Are you set?
And then I'm all set.
All right. Under other business, uh, the only thing I have, we got a letter from the library, uh, from the board of trustees. Uh, we had asked, uh, when the presentation for the pavilion and the possibility of doing solar on the top and also use by the rec department, we asked for the, um, excuse me, board of trustees for their yes or no. And we have a letter from them supporting all of the things that we asked about.
So, so at this point, um, I was, with the, with the approval of the select board, I will move forward with finding out what it's gonna cost, where we could place it and putting together a proposal to see how we could deal with that.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And it'd be great.
And then with, and with, and with that proposal, they're already saying that they're spending about six thousand dollars between the rec and them for tenants.
Yeah.
So let's just make sure that we keep that into consideration, that that, that line item would be, um, useful to pay for this.
Correct.
Right.
Sure.
Okay. Um, I don't believe we need a motion just to accept the letter.
Basically, um, cause I'm moving forward with creating a proposal. We'll get a motion if we get to that point. So.
So is there, uh, executive session?
I'd like to just do one personnel.
Okay. So we'll, uh, have a motion at eight oh seven to go into executive session?
So move.
Okay.
Bye, guys.
Favor. All right. Thank you all.